Okay, good evening, everybody. We'll call to order this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for September the 3rd at 7:04 PM. For the record, Commissioner Poyzon is unavailable tonight due to a scheduling conflict and alternate member Christine Doolin will be sitting in his place. Can you, Ms. Lynch, would you call petition number two? We're gonna go out of order because we're waiting for one person to be present on petition number one.
152 Revgate Terrace, petition of Christopher Pia seeking a site plan review and variance of 4.2 of the minimum front setback requirement of 25 to 21 inches in order to construct a covered front porch to the existing family, Senegal family. Hardship, pre-existing house sits 12 inches from the front yard setback which prohibits the proposed construction of the front porch entryway.
Okay, petitioner is present. Good evening, Councilman Pia, good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening, good to see everybody. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Chris Pia.
Hi, I'm Courtney Pia.
It's my wife. We're here tonight to petition for a variance, as Ms. Lynch just read. Bought my home back in 2016. The property, I haven't done anything with, so it's still current since I bought it. It was built in 1951, your traditional, nice little Cape Town lordship. And what we're looking to do is Courtney and I want to make it our long-term home and start a family. So, we've hired an architect, we're doing everything the right way, we got some great plans drawn up, I believe that you guys have been presented with those. And, of course, the one little thing, it is a unique lot, as Mr. Brennan mentioned in his report, we are looking for a small variance on the front only, only because Courtney would love to have a little porch to drink her tea in the morning and wave at the neighbors. So, that's what we're looking to do. I will point out, the hardship, obviously, it is, you know, the property is built right on the line, so we're looking for a few feet, a simple covered porch to put a couple rocking chairs on. That's what we're here for tonight. The other thing I will point out to you as well is, and I think it's, and I learned about all this, obviously, after I bought the property, but there is actually an in-law apartment that was built on the, and attached to the house, I believe, back in 2000. So, obviously, well before I purchased the property, for an older woman who I'd bought the property from. But we are actually gonna be removing that piece from the house in its entirety. It wasn't built with a basement, so we want to just extend the foundation a little bit in the back. I bring that up to you because we're actually gonna, by doing that and still, you know, redoing the home, we're actually gonna be decreasing the net overall footprint of the house on the property. So, the only other thing I'll point out is I obviously did, I followed all the rules, I believe, sent out all the letters, I did go around, I get all my neighbors, did sign saying they supported me as well on this. So, Courtney, you want to say anything else? No?
Okay, questions from commissioners? Mr. Carroll?
Yes, sir. So, to be clear, you're adding approximately a four-foot-eight front porch, but you're only coming over the existing line by less than three feet?
Yes, we're going, and actually, my architect, Dan Pato's here as well. I believe we're technically requesting 36 inches, Dan?
Yeah, in fact, yeah. Daniel Pato, 2490 Black Rock Turnpike Fairfield. Yeah, we're actually going a little bit less, about 35 inches over the setback. The addition's about three feet eight from the existing house, but the house is about a foot away from the setback.
I want to be accurate for you, so.
So, you would be building right over where your flower beds are now?
Essentially.
I drove by there.
We're gonna, the rose bushes are gorgeous, I love them, we're gonna, we're definitely gonna replant them, but we want to get that little porch there, so, yeah.
But it does look like there's similar porches in other houses on that area.
There are, actually, right across the street. I did, I emailed Dan, I don't know if you shared, but I took a few photos, to be specific, directly across the street at 137 Rygate, the De Martinos have a porch that we're basically just trying to mimic.
Yeah.
And then, right along the back, there's a couple of their houses I sent photos of as well. That's what we're just trying to do, so.
I love front porches.
Agreed. You can wave to people.
Just to confirm, we had, I saw two different numbers here. Building construction 1951, I had heard, saw, and then they said early 1900s.
No, the, my, the original property was built in 1951.
1951, okay.
To my knowledge, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. There was a notation also that, okay, you had, and also mentioned that you were gonna be removing the accessory apartment.
Yep.
Maybe Attorney Florick, is there any issue that, that would create for granting the variance that we should be aware of?
No, none at all. In fact, if that's part of the job that's planned, it's always the intent of the zoning regulations to reduce non-conformities, if you can do it. And if that, if this petition accomplishes that, that's a good thing.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from members? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Before you, um, Chris mentioned, I think, that he had a petition signed by other people. I don't know if, is that already part of the record, or do you want to present?
Is this the one Kathleen Hammel?
Yes.
Is number one?
You have that document.
Okay.
And has been received, is part of the record.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Anyone in opposition? If not, we'll take a motion to close this hearing item by Ms. Doolin, seconded by Mr. Carroll. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Mr. Carroll, can you call petition number three? We'll keep going as the other alternate member has not arrived yet.
I know. So, I try to.
We got a lot of paper.
Petition number three is number 516 Valley Road, petition of James Dunlap, seeking site plan review, variance of 4.2 of the minimum front setback requirements of 20 feet to 11 feet in order to construct in addition to the existing single-family duplex, hardship being pre-existing non-conforming lot and structure making a development difficult to comply with the regulations.
Okay. Petitioners, just please give us your names and addresses for our record. Thank you, sir.
Jim Dunlap, 120 Davis Road, Seymour, Connecticut.
Okay.
Albert Mashtry, 68 Montevideo Drive, Trumbull.
Okay. You have your mailing certificates there?
Yes.
We have them, okay, we have them, thanks, yeah. Okay, just tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do.
There was an existing, uh...
Just speaking to the microphone so we can all hear, yeah.
There was an existing, I guess, the old owner covered a porch, it was six-foot wide, and it was on footings, eight-inch, I think there were eight-inch sonotubes, taking that down. It was, the back was rotting out, the water was getting into the wall, so when we bought the house, it was rotting out. We just wanted to extend it, and I guess the zoning changed, because technically, it's a driveway, not a road kind of deal, so I guess everything changed, and it was short, like, certain amount of feet.
Four feet.
Yes, four feet. So, it was an existing porch, covered porch, I guess he covered it, Recuperto was the old owner.
Okay.
Wasn't built too good, so.
The reason for going to the side, the reason for going to the side is because the yard is very narrow, so if it went back, like, there'd be very little backyard, and also, to keep him on one level, he has, he has problems with his feet, so he wants to keep the massive bedroom and everything on one level.
Okay. Just give me one sec, I gotta grab the, I had a question on the site plan, let me just grab that one. Grabbed all the Keating Drive stuff, and I know I'm missing this. Actually, any members have questions, you can grab that while I'm getting organized here.
I do. I don't understand this diagram at all.
Oh, that's, uh...
You already, you currently have a, you dug a foundation?
We started because I thought everything was all set, we stopped everything, so there was no foundation, there was footings on this, it was like a little, like a covered porch, and I guess he covered it, put windows in.
That whole area was a porch that currently is excavated?
Uh, yes. It was only six feet, six feet by the length of the house.
When in time, gentlemen, so we can all hear?
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Yeah, it was six feet, it was the existing porch he covered, and went the length of the house, which is, I think, 20 feet, yes, so six, six by 20, and they were on footings. We're extending it all the way out with a foundation and a basement, like...
Okay, so you dug, you dug that foundation?
We started.
We started, we, the whole's a dug.
Yeah.
There's no footings in there.
Yeah, nothing's been poured.
So, what is this?
This is, uh...
That's what's being added on.
This is what's being added, this is the existing house, the existing side of the house. Okay, and this is what we're gonna put on, gonna come out of this.
What's that?
That's just a little picture of the... That's, that's the whole room, that's the whole room.
That's what it's gonna look like when we finish it.
These are the cottages that were built in 1917.
Yeah. I'm surprised she could add on to them.
Yeah, everybody, like, they did just one room, they didn't cover the upstairs. I talked to Dan, like, they never covered the peaks, but everybody just seems to just go straight out, and that's pretty much it, so.
So, this is a one-story addition?
A one-story addition.
Yes.
And it's gonna be, what'd you say, a bedroom?
Yes.
Bedroom, bathroom.
Bathroom.
So, I think that, that's actually one of the questions that I, that I was trying to understand, because I got a little confused in some of the commentary, so, is it a porch, or it's an addition to the house itself?
Oh, it's an addition.
It's addition to the house itself, okay.
There was a porch there.
It was a porch.
There was a, the guy, it was a porch, but he covered.
Four-foot porch.
Yep.
And we're just going out 20 feet.
Okay.
Close it in, make it a room.
Okay, I see. Okay, that was, that was some of my confusion, because I was just trying to see, and you said the house was built when, 1917?
1917, yeah.
1917, seven, one-seven, right?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
Is there any historical requirements, I mean, because they were built so long ago, and a lot of them, I know, have slate roofs and they're brick.
Yeah, everybody's been doing, a lot of them change the slate roofs, I think, Don Heinrich just, just changed his.
Okay, I was just curious, if there were any requirements, you know, in that specific area?
Yep, just usually just dormers, and then straight out on the first floor is all I see with construction, so.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question now.
Mr. Carroll?
Is there a picture, am I missing, of what the existing structure looked like before it was removed?
Uh, yeah, I'll do that. No, it's just a, it's just a...
And is it, the removed structure was at the same setback from the road that you're proposing now?
Yes, it was. Not as wide, not as...
I guess my question is why the entire structure couldn't have been moved back to be in the setbacks?
Okay.
Move the whole thing back, it would've...
Wouldn't line up? It wouldn't line up right.
Well, I understand.
But the backyard's so small.
But then you moved the backyard, you might have a problem with it.
I had room, but it would've, it would've boxed it out, like, would've cut it like a, you know, like a square area, would've took away from the backyard.
Yeah, I understand, it would've taken more room out of the backyard, but...
Which there isn't much of it.
From the backyard?
Yeah, the side, it goes on the angle.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Right, no, it's, it's on the plot plan here, and it, you know, it looks like the room is there to meet within the setback, if the entire structure moved to the back.
The existing wall.
Yeah, we thought about that when we realized that we were like four feet short or something like that.
Well, that was the existing...
It's just gonna throw everything out of whack, as far as...
The old room was where we're putting, we're, we're not going farther out in front.
No.
That's where it was existing, we just, we're short, like, because it goes on an angle.
Right.
So, this photograph?
Oh, boy.
Yeah, that's it.
And there's, you've got red marks and black marks, I'm assuming that maybe this is the porch. Do, are, are those black marks and red marks significant of anything?
Oh, yeah, the red mark to the white mark.
And it was...
The red to the white mark, that was the existing porch.
So, is the porch on that picture?
Oh, it was actually, they used that as a bedroom.
It was actually used as a, they, they actually had that as a, that was the original porch, but then they...
Yeah, fine, no, that's fine.
So, the original, just so that we're all, we're all clear, the area between the red line and what appears to be some grass, I'm assuming that was the porch prior?
Yes.
And then, the black mark, markation there is the extent of what you want to construct?
No, the existing porch was from the red line to the white line.
Yeah, well, no, that's a sidewalk, so right there, the black line, that's correct.
Oh, oh, oh.
That's the old, that was the stupid sidewalk, then we...
Oh, there was a sidewalk.
Yeah, or it just went to nowhere.
Yeah.
Yes, I would...
I guess the lot next to it was gonna be for a garage back in the days, unless not a conform lot, short some square footage or something, because my, I got a B-plus lot, goes on a slice.
It's a strange shape, I'll grant you that for a proper...
Yeah, it's good, it's called a B-plus, and I'm not sure why.
Looks like Nevada. Okay, any other questions from members? Or if you need more time to review, let me know.
One sec.
I think we're all set. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Is there anybody in the members of the public that wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, we'll take a motion to close. Mr. Carroll, seconded by Ms. Sweeley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Mr. Carroll, you have a conflict you want to declare on item one, is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then, you can please step down from the dais, we hear the petition, and alternate member Judy Cleary will be sitting in on item one only. Ms. Sweeley, you want to call petition number one?
Petition of Keating Drive LLC seeking a site plan review and variance of 3.3.1, quotes three, quotes a, of the minimum required lot area in the RS1 zone in order to create a rear building lot. Hardship, the amount and location of wetlands and the location of the proposed rear lot abutting a private road.
Good evening, Mr. Proto.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. For the record, my name is Benjamin Proto, I'm an attorney at 2885 Main Street here in Stratford, I represent the petitioner, Keating Drive LLC. I'm handing Ms. Cleary our certificates of mailing, the copy of the letter that was sent to abutting neighbors, a copy of the sign that was posted, and also a petition that was signed by four of the seven property owners. One of the other property owners, which we'll talk about in a little bit, is the golf course, it has a small private road that abuts. One of the other petitioners, or one of the other abutters are Michael and Christine Shannon. Mr. Shannon and Ms. Shannon are the owners of Keating Drive LLC, which owns the property. And one of the other abutters is the Costello family, which I have an email from, which I will read when we get to that, regarding a question they have before they were willing to completely agree, but are not opposed necessarily to this. We're here this evening seeking a variance of the minimum required lot area for a rear lot. The property, and you, I know you have all of these in this, this particular map, it's a little hard to see, but this is a survey of the entire parcel of the property. It's currently one large piece of just under 100,000 square feet, and recently, a house was, was built in the lower right-hand portion of the property on the Keating Drive portion of the area. Our proposal is to create that lot into a 40,000-square-foot building lot, which would meet all requirements, all zoning regulations, would not require any variances, and to create a rear lot of just under total, in total area of just under 60,000 square feet, including the wetland area and the accessway. So, this is the entire lot. This strip here, is what I was referring to, is a small, is a private drive that connects Keating Drive to the golf course. No one really quite knows how that ever came to be when they did the golf course and the property, but it has been there since the day they created Ornoke, to the point where the golf course didn't, even though they owned it for a long time, until they were told about it when they, because you may recall, the golf course was purchased a few years ago. Every time that golf course was purchased, they never knew this existed until somebody on either side of them came to them about the issue with this, this strip. This is the, Mr. Costello here is a property that we discussed earlier. This property here, the north of the property, the property owned by the Shannons, that's 260 Keating Drive. The interesting thing about 260 Keating Drive is it, it fronts no street, it has no street frontage, it is just about 40,000 total square feet. Back, I believe, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, 1999, I believe it was, a variance was issued by the ZBA to vary the requirement that there be street frontage, and the reason being is that this property had easement over that strip of land from like three golf courses ago to access Keating Drive. So, the ZBA varied the requirement for the property to front the street, it is completely landlocked, but accesses Keating Drive via the, the private drive that exists from the golf course. Interestingly enough, also, on Judith Terrace, James Farm Road, there are some other properties up on James Farm Road that are in a similar situation, where they either don't front, or they're short front, or they're short property for a rear lot, which I believe, again, Dan can correct me if I'm wrong, but there had been some, over the years, some properties on James Farm that the board varied lot sizes for. What we're proposing to do, and again, I believe you have all the maps, it can make it a little difficult to read just from the side, is to create a front lot of 40,000 square feet, and the rear lot, which is a total of, I believe, just under 57,000 square feet, which includes the wetlands and the accessway. The issue we have, in trying to reconfigure this any other way, there was really, when this house was first built, there was really only one place it could have been per, put, given the wetlands and the setbacks and the wetlands. Obviously, we have the setback area, and the, the structure is outside of the buffer zone, which didn't require any variance for that. So, what we want to do is create this rear lot, we don't have 60,000 square feet, but we do have all of these wetlands along, that run completely along our property, and interestingly enough, they are, I believe, the only property that is, has the wetlands fully along it. So, the, the resulting wetlands make it difficult for us to be able to utilize all of the property. The question that has come up from Mr. Costello, a very legitimate question that he asked in an email to the Shannons, was, he says he's not opposed to, necessarily opposed to this. He is concerned about where the house would be located in relation to the wetlands, and what, if any, disturbance would occur with the wetlands. If you look at the application, you'll see that Kelly Carrigan has signed the application, but she's also put a note on it, which we understand and have already discussed briefly with Kelly, and should you grant this, we'll have more conversations with Kelly about how we can develop that piece by providing additional protection to the wetlands, not disturbing the wetlands, being as far away as we can from them, we believe we can build outside of the buffer, not impacting any of the wetlands, and developing that property into another building lot. If you've never been on Keating Drive, it's just north of the highway, of the, of the parkway. If you were coming up Chapel and turned onto James Farm Road at Chapel School, as soon as you go over the bridge, the Barrett Parkway Bridge, there's a right turn, right there. It's a very secluded street, there's a few houses there, it's a very secluded street, the folks who live there tend to like to have, because, given the consideration of where the parkway is, it's also a very quiet area, given where the parkway is. And so, we think this keeps in that, and it's gonna create just another secluded lot and another secluded property, that doesn't impact any of the surrounding properties, and we think enhances the properties. Now, what's also most interesting, and I believe you also have a copy of this, is way back when, and I believe it was 1951, this block was split, proposed to be split into two building lots. The map was recorded, but it was never finalized and never given final approval by zoning or building. And so, while the map is recorded, these lots were never in fact split. So, basically, what they would have done was basically created two lots in similar size to what we're proposing now, one of which would not have fronted Keating Drive. They would have had to have utilized that strip of land to, to access Keating Drive. So, the proposal here is very simply to create a building lot, a rear lot, on, off of Keating Drive, with access to Keating Drive as required by the regulation, with the minimum required, actually exceeds the minimum required accessway to the rear lot, with a lot that's slightly undersized, but we think provides for a similar type development that's there now, that the neighbors have no issues with, and for the most part, support, and I think keeping somewhat to what you did back in 1999 with the 260 lot, where you said, you don't even have to be on a street to be able to build a house back there. That's basically what we want to do. It's a relatively simple and straightforward petition, and I think it's better, and again, I believe you have the GIS map, you all should have that, it was part of the package. You can see all the surrounding properties there, of various sizes and various shapes, some smaller, some larger, and as a result, again, this kind of fits in, you can see the one where it says the lot to be split, and you can see the lot behind it is the 260 that I was referring to that doesn't have access. Mr. Chairman, I think it might be better to answer questions that may occur. I know there was, I think, a question that came up as to whether or not this is self-created because we purchased the property knowing the wetlands were there.
Persian?
We obviously purchased the property knowing the wetlands were there, but we didn't put the wetlands there. We can't move the wetlands, we can't build on the wetlands, we can't fill the wetlands. So, the wetlands, I don't believe are self-created, they were put there by some higher authority than, than me, or the Shannons.
Okay. Or the Shannons.
More importantly, the Shannons. But we have to work around that which exists, and so, to me, a hardship is something that exists with the land. In this particular case, those wetlands exist with the land, we didn't put them there, and as a result, I don't believe it becomes self-created.
So, let me just make sure I understand the status of what's marked as Keating Drive on the town map.
The GIS map.
On GIS map.
Okay, yep.
So, in effect, this is incorrect, that is really just a private driveway, it's not a, Keating Drive doesn't split.
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct, that is not part of Keating Drive.
Okay.
It is a private driveway owned by the Ornoke Golf Course.
So, then, the, the proposed lot, the street access that it would have, is the... So then, the proposed lot, the street access that it would have, is the 27.45-foot strip that's actually on the true Keating Drive. Is that correct?
Correct. So the access would be here.
Okay. Okay. I'll let other people ask questions, but I wanted to get that one out first.
And I will also just to put on the record, so you're aware.
Yeah.
We did approach the golf course about seeking an easement onto there and then creating, similar to what was done back here, and seeking a variance to the street frontage. Originally, the golf course was amenable to the easement. We were offered them some, I thought, really fair compensation for it. They ultimately decided that they didn't want to do that. I know there are other properties, at least the property across the street or across the way here has an easement to that strip. So without that easement, without being able to utilize, oh, excuse me, my apologies, without being able to utilize that strip to get to Keating Drive, we then had to go to a rear lot configuration.
Oh, and 255 Judith, that's Mr. Costello?
I believe, I think he's up here, so that would be, I believe, I'm not sure, 250, yes, I believe he's 255.
Okay.
Or 265, actually. Nope. The...
The mailings.
Yeah, the mailings.
Oh.
Although, I don't know that he, I think it happened.
We've done.
He's 255, okay.
Mr. Costello is 255.
Okay. Now I think I'm oriented with the map, so I'll open it to members for questions. Ms. Doolan.
I misunderstood, so the proposed back lot, the access would be off Keating Drive?
It has to be by regulation.
And where, where is the access?
The access would, along here, along to the west of the...
Existing houses?
Of the existing house. And that's the area that we've had some preliminary conversations with Ms. Carrigan about, should you approve this, as to how we could do that, by creating an appropriate driveway that protects the wetlands, that protects the wildlife that's there. It would, in all probability, be a fully pervious driveway, no impervious materials there, that would allow for drainage and protection of the wets. Because you'll also notice, the way the wets curl off, the last probably 50 to 60 feet are not within the wet, are not abutting the wetlands, but they would be in the buffer.
And none of this property belongs to 230, that where the, where the access for...
It's all 2, so right now, all of this is 230.
Is 230.
The entire lot is 230.
Okay, that's what I thought.
What we would do, if you were to approve this, this lot here...
I couldn't overlay.
Will become 230.
Yeah. No, I understand.
And then whatever the town or the post office assigns to that will become the new address for Keating Drive.
Okay. I know you built a, whoever built a, very nice-looking house. If that was situated elsewhere, would there not have been an issue with splitting it?
If the wet, the issue is the wetlands.
The current house.
Right. So if, assuming, we would still be short a little bit, we'd still be short roughly the same amount, but we could have reconfigured that to make it, assuming these were not here, that all of this land becomes part of what we could utilize. And it's always an interesting concept, like, I've always had an issue with wetlands don't count, even though they're part of the property to size. But if these were not here, then the house could have probably been reconfigured in a different location, which would have then done, would have, I think, assuming these were not here, if I were doing this, and I think Mr. Shannon would probably agree with this, if these were not here, the house would have shifted this way, and the accessway would have been along that access road, which would have made it even less intrusive. But the wetlands are what caused the problem as to why the house is located where it is. You're welcome.
Other members, questions? Ms. Cleary?
How, how close to the wetlands will this driveway come?
So it has to be 25 feet at the street, minimum. And I believe, at the street, we're just under 28 feet at the street, and then it tails off on a diagonal away from the wetlands. So it opens up more space as we pick up more of the wetlands, we get further away from it.
Okay, thank you.
So, I guess, going back to two of the open issues, so the question that Mr. Costello brought, so I guess at this point, we would not...
Would you like me to read his email?
Yeah, let's handle that part, yeah.
I'll read his email for you, that's fair. Says, "Hi Christine, we received a notice from your lawyer. I am undecided if we will attend the September meeting. We don't have any objections to the property division. I did meet with the city engineer and established that the second lot would be a buildable lot. We figured that the setback from the wetlands and Deb's property," I'm not sure which ones, which one's Deb? Uh, that, Costello, that's his mother or mother-in-law. That's the Costello property.
Okay.
From Deb's, it would be about 170 feet on the width of approximately 240-foot lot. I do have a call in the conservation department for how much of the trees and foliage should remain as part of the wetlands. I understand that you have no current plans for the new lot, but I will be more than likely ask these questions, so the answer's on the record for future reference. I wanted to let you know in advance, so your lawyer's prepared. Again, just wanted it on the record, if you decide to build at a later date or sell the property. Hope you're well, best of luck in selling the property, the house renovations, yada, yada, yada. Yours, Michael Costello." So, the issue is, I think, twofold. One, how far back from the property line to where the house would be built? And obviously, we have to create the building box with the appropriate setback. Those are clearly easy to meet. Once we build, we create this line, these both lots, all, the building, all four building box lines are created and with no variance to meet.
Okay.
And also, there would be absolutely no intrusion into any of the wetlands. And I don't anticipate, and I don't think Michael anticipates, that there would be any removal, other, I don't know, I don't think there's any trees back in the lot. There are, the vegetation that's going to remain there...
Just come up to the, yeah, just give us your name.
The back area.
Michael Shannon, 260 Keating Drive.
The vegetation that's going to remain in the rear part of that lot, or if you're coming off of my driveway, which is the access point, is probably five times more than the vegetation that exists in the back of the Costello's property. And that was built off of, on Judith. They basically have their lawn going right to the stream. So I understand their concern about the vegetation and the wetlands, but I think it's more for their privacy. I don't think it has to do really with the wetlands, because their property goes pretty much abuts the stream, and no consideration was taken at that time when that house was built. So, I mean, being that I live right next door, you know, we've lived there for almost 30 years, and the house that was there, and just to clarify, there was a house there in the front, an older house. We kept the bones of the older house and expanded it to bring it into more of a modern home. I think we did a pretty good job. It looks nice. We did all landscaping. I own a landscaping company in town. So I worked very closely with Kelly Carrigan, and before we even bought that property, I had walked it with her, kind of explained to her what my thoughts were, and she was nice enough to give her time to me. So we have a plan, and she, you know, when we did the landscaping for 230, you know, we included a lot of natives and stuff that would add to the, to the area. So we did give a lot of thought, which will be done for this building lot in the future. And it's not something that, you know, we're planning on building right now, but, because I do live next door, I want to kind of keep the natural area, but just for our investment to try to recoup, you know, what we had put into the initial house in the front, you know, that property is worth more as a building lot, whether it be for my daughters or something down, you know, in the future, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So last question, Mr. Pro, I think you touched on it in the zoning comments, just to clarify, this attempt that Mr. Brennan referenced in his 1970s, that's the map issue that you were talking about. Is that correct, sir?
That was the map issue that I was talking about, correct. So in the 1970s, the property, the owner of the property at the time, in some way, shape, or form, I think, because this prop, just so we're clear, based on a title search we had done at Mr. Brennan's request, we had a title search done to determine whether or not this property has ever been split.
Okay.
As we all know, if it hasn't...
First cut.
We got the first one. So I think what that was, and once we got the title search back and our searcher looked at that, what I believe the then-owner was looking at was, I can split this, and I really don't need to come see all you folks, I could just come get a sign-off from whoever the zoning officer was at the time, because it's a first split. They created somewhat of a map, I'm not, I'm not sure we would look at that today. It's something we would do, but...
Times have changed.
That's what they did. They took it, drew a line, and said, "Here are two lots." Yeah, with no real boundaries or locations, but they never went forward with it. So while the map is recorded, I don't think the map has any legal effect, because no one in the zoning office ever approved the map. And of course, in 1970s, we did have a planning and zoning commission at that time, and the subdivision rules and regulations and the laws of the state of Connecticut were in effect, is where the zoning, at the then-time, whatever the subdivision regulations were for the town of Stratford. So I think that was its purpose, was to get that first cut. They recorded it, and they never did anything. So while it's on the land records, I don't believe it has any legal effect.
I just have one more question.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Don't be sorry.
And my question is, should the lot be allowed to be split? Why wouldn't it be able to be accessed via that, the drive that you have to go down to get to Shannon's property?
Because the golf course, once they had, they had, we had asked them and had preliminary agreement on our acquiring an easement over that.
Yeah.
They subsequently determined that they did not want to do that. So the golf course does not want to give us the easement, even, even though we were willing to pay relatively good money for it.
So did they have to provide an easement for the Shannon property?
This property back here?
Yeah.
Yes. That easement exists. I got it, don't worry about it. That easement exists, and the property here, the Baker property on the other side, has an easement, which was granted many, in both cases, many years ago, and before this owner came in. We were, quite frankly, somewhat surprised when they called and said, "We changed our mind." We, we were all set to do it, and then they changed their mind. That would have just made life a whole lot easier for everybody.
Yeah.
But if they are not willing to do it, then there's not a lot that we can do about that. So we have to find another way to try to accomplish the similar goal.
Okay. I'm sorry if you already said that earlier and I asked it again. Thank you.
It's good to get clarification. Any other questions from members?
So if it's approved, it still has to go to the wetlands after us, right?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Wetlands, yes, it would have to go to wetlands for approval, not only for the driveway, but for the, for the construction of the house.
Ms. Flork, there's a lot of stuff here. Anything that you would advise the commissioner of before we proceed, we close the hearing?
No, I think it's been adequately covered, and I think your staff comments, Dan's staff comments, provide a detailed picture of what's going on here.
Okay, appreciate that, sir. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you all for your time.
I think we're good. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Anyone in opposition? If not, we'll take a motion to close by Ms. Sweeley, second. Ms. Cleary, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. That wraps up our public hearing at 7:49 PM. That objection will go right into the regular hearing. So let's stay on this one before Mr. Carroll comes back. So do you want to take item one off the table? Is there a motion? By Ms. Cleary?
Motion to take it off the table, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lynch. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. It's available for discussion and motions. Anybody want to start?
Well, the wetlands were already there, so. I don't know how that's a hardship, but...
I still don't understand the golf course. That's just silly to me.
Go ahead, sir.
If the golf course ever changes their mind in the future, the lot in question would be more conforming than what it needs to be if this application is approved. So it would exceed the lot coverage at that point.
I could start off by just some things from my own notes here. So it's a unique situation, obviously, and in a very, very remote location. You know, the hardship, it pretty much speaks to it, that there is a very unusual-shaped piece of property. Looks like it's been something people have been interested in for some time, but never took any action on it. Again, as we said, wetlands were created by the good Lord, not by, by the applicant. As if, I jokingly said when we were discussing the other one, that we had a Nevada-shaped piece of property. This one does create an Oklahoma-shaped piece of property. We have that narrow, narrow panhandle over on the side, but it still actually meets it and allows it to be accessed. So there's, we've seen some, interior lots tend to have that configuration, at least that's been, been some of my experience before. So it's not atypical to have this. Obviously, if that mismarked driveway really was Keating Drive, as it is on the GIS map, which we've identified previously, is not correct, but if it was, that does solve all sorts of problems. But here, it would be available, you know, as it is right there. It does seem to be that this is a minimum variance, and we actually get what's relatively close to a full second, second lot available there. There's been no substantive objection to it that I can see. And it looks like it is actually possible to create that accessway without touching the, the wetlands' boundaries. It's close, but it's possible. So I'm not coming up with any major objections to this right now. In fact, I think it would actually work for all parties involved at this point, but I'll listen to the further debate.
May I move to approve?
Motion approved by Ms. Cleary. Is there a second?
Second.
By Ms. Lynch, okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion?
Any future building for the zoning and wetlands to give a yea or a nay?
Procedurally, as I think we stated, it will have to go through wetlands, so this is just the variance piece of this that we'd have to go through. Anything further? Tell Mr. Carroll to... I'll tell Mr. Carroll to come up. He can come back, because we're going to get going to the other one. But we'll go right to a vote. Let's take care of that. Um, let's see, Ms. Sweeley.
What do I vote?
Yes.
Approve.
Approve. Uh, Ms. Lynch?
Approve.
Uh, Ms. Doolan?
No.
Okay. Ms. Cleary? And the chair votes to approve. The ayes are four, the one, the nays are one. It is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just get Mr. Carroll back here.
Not if I.
Okay.
Yep.
Welcome back, sir. Okay, let's take petition number two off of the table, if you don't mind. Okay, so you're, you're good. Okay, so Ms. Doolan, is there a second?
Second.
And Mr. Carroll? Okay. Discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Okay. Open for discussion, motions, whatever you'd like, commissioners?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Ms. Doolan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lynch. Any, um, discussion on the, uh, application? Mr. Carroll, you want to say? Okay. Okay, I can start.
Thank you very much.
Good night, Mr. Proto.
Good night.
Okay, again, this looks to be, uh, goes right to the point of it being the minimum amount of, um, relief necessary. We're talking thirty-four and a fraction inches. Um, it has been stipulated that the property, um, was constructed in nineteen fifty-one, quite a bit earlier than, um, the, uh, the petitioner had taken, taken ownership of it, and I guess prior to regulations, actually. Um, by taking these actions, it looks like it's going to actually bring it to more in compliance by, by the reduction of, um, coverage. Um, it's not a self-created hardship. That's the way the building was built, very, very close to the, um, to the line, setback line. Um, appears to have support and be in harmony with the rest of the neighborhood. Um, so as evidenced by the petition that has been received, um, I would support the application. I have no objections to it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think that the staff comments also indicate that the, the lot is a irregular shape.
Irregular shape, thank you, sir.
And that that shape presents extreme difficulty, uh, in complying with the present zoning regulations. You might want to note that.
I will note that, that again, and as mentioned by the town attorney, that the comments provided by Mr. Brennan do indicate the irregular shape of the lot, which would make, uh, compliance, uh, very difficult. So thank you for keeping me honest, sir. Thank you. Comments from other members?
For that address, um, the family did purchase it in twenty sixteen, so that was already built in nineteen fifty-one, as you said, first.
Yep.
It's a single family, um, and it already had a property of addition on it, but they're going to remove it. Uh, it was in the back, and, um, comes into terms following all regulations.
Good, thank you, Commissioner. Further comments? If not, we'll go to a vote. Ms. Sweeley?
Approve.
Approve. Uh, Ms. Lynch?
Approve.
Ms. Doolan?
Approve.
Mr. Carroll?
Approve.
And the chair votes to approve, so it's five in favor, none opposed, and it is, uh, approved. Congratulations, sir. Enjoy your tea.
Just make sure you plant those roses.
Good night, sir. Okay, petition, petition number three. Take a motion to take it off the table?
Motion by Mr. Carroll.
Is there a second? I'm sorry, Judy, you're, actually, you're, now it's these guys. Go ahead. Ms. Doolan, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. It's off the table. Open for discussion.
Because I just have a concern with, um, just what was presented.
Go ahead.
Just the drawing and not knowing what, what the structure is actually going to look like.
Okay. Further, um.
I like that they confirmed that the one-story addition is going to be a bedroom and a bathroom as well that's been added. It was a nineteen seventeen, um, you know, residence.
Yep.
And the markings were confirmed. He said that the red mark was, was the existing porch.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, the black outline was where they're going to extend addition. And, um, there was no confronting lot, um, for the flood. It's just a driveway now, something about four feet. I wasn't sure. He said four feet, something like that.
In what area, four feet?
Um, the driveway, it was a driveway there.
Oh.
Something about a driveway, he said.
Where's that map?
Originally, it was back then, he said. It was a driveway, he said.
There's a walkway, but I don't think there's a driveway.
Okay, the walkway.
Yeah, if, if I may.
Yes, sir.
That access area is a private driveway, which is to be maintained by the applicant's property, the property abutting him, and the first one on the entry of that.
Right.
Um, that's, that's all detailed in the, uh, warranty deed that should be in the file.
Okay, I would just note again, same, some of the points that Commissioner Lynch mentioned, um, nineteen seventeen construction, so it predates it, the variance is not, and it is a, um, non-conforming lot. It is a very unusual, unusually shaped lot. Um, that's a very narrow street there, uh, that it, that it's on. Um, and yeah, I think that would, if you, it actually, it goes, it gets even narrower as you go to the rear away from the street. So it's a, it's a pretty unusual, um, setup for the, you know, to make it conforming. Um, I, I do echo the sentiments of, um, of Ms. Doolan, that, yeah, it's, I'm a little, I was a little confused as to what was being proposed, um, but I, I think we got some of the details in the hearing, so that's, that's at least good. Um, we were talking about a reduction of nine feet, it looks like, from twenty to eleven. Um, there's been no objections stated in the record from anybody else as to the, uh, of the work done. Uh, just, so it's not applying to any other parcels. Again, unique conditions, shape, pre-existing nor-conforming location of the existing home. Um, according to the remarks by the administrator, it appears that this is a legitimate hardship, so I'd be inclined to support the petition. Mr. Carroll? Yes, sir.
I would add that, uh, the existing structure that was there, uh, appears to be at the closest distance to the road, and with adding the, uh, additional width to that space, it actually, it does not get any closer to the road. If anything, it gets further.
Further away.
That line was already established, so I don't think there's objection.
Okay. Any further remarks? Questions, concerns?
Oh, I would like to add one more thing.
Please, sir.
Um, if the board does approve this, any building permit that's submitted will have to meet building code. Will have to show what materials they'll be using.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll have a structural plan at some point if this is approved.
Okay, should we, that is a stipulation on the approval, or does it just not, just?
They, they won't get a building permit.
They won't get a building permit, so it'll just can't be handled by itself.
Yep.
Okay, makes sense. Okay, ready to go?
Sure.
Okay, Ms. Sweeley?
Um, I approve.
Approve. Ms. Lynch?
I approve.
Ms. Doolan?
I approve.
Mr. Carroll?
Friday they get the building permit.
Yeah. Mr. Carroll?
Approve.
Okay, the chair votes also to approve, so the ayes are five, the nays are zero, and the application is approved. Okay, let me wade through the pile of papers and get the agenda. Let's see, approval of the minutes of the June fourth, twenty twenty-four meeting. We were all here? Was somebody here not here in June?
I wasn't.
You were not here. Okay, so you don't vote on that, but Judy, you can vote. Oh, you can?
I'm sorry to interrupt. For Robert Close of Order.
Oh.
You do not, a motion to, um, approve minutes does not necessarily state that you were here. You're just supporting the veracity of the secretarial minutes.
Okay. I learned something tonight, in that case.
I didn't hear that.
I don't, I don't hear that.
It's, 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 it's been.
I didn't hear what you said.
I was just, yeah.
For Robert Close of Order, a motion to approve minutes does not.
Oh, sorry. A motion to approve the minutes does not mean that you are stating that you were present at the meeting. It only states that you are supporting the veracity of the secretarial minutes, which I would not necessarily expect you to do for me, because I'm not your usual secretary. But if it were Gail, whose minutes you are familiar with and the way she writes, that would be the case.
Okay, I'll take that as a, okay. So in that case, we'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the June fourth meeting by anybody. By Ms. Doolan, second?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch? Any changes, corrections, modifications? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Uh, any erosion or sediment control? Any members' concerns, comments, anything that you want to bring up? Good stories from your summer vacations? No?
Oh, I, I just want to ask, do we ever do walkarounds?
I'm sorry?
At any point, you know?
Of the applicant properties?
Yeah, for.
Yeah, you're entitled to do it. I think it actually says in the application that somebody who's an applicant should be aware that members may make, um, visits there. We don't do it as a group, because then it would be advertised as a meeting. Uh, you'd have to have public notice, we'd have to have minutes taken, somebody would have to record it, but if there's a, correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, um, if there is a subject petition like the ones we had today, you are entitled to go and, and visit the property, encouraged, actually, I would say, um, so that you can understand it beyond just looking at paper.
Well, I, I tried to go, I didn't make all of them today, but, um, being so inexperienced, it would just be helpful if I could view some of these places with somebody who knows what they're.
Yeah, it's, I remember one of my, one of, one of my predecessors, Commissioner Torrey, used to say that that was one of his, uh, Saturday before the meeting, that's what he always used to do, is take a ride out with, uh, and go visit all the properties. They used to have fairly lengthy agendas, things, mercifully, ours aren't quite that long, um, but he used to tell me about that all the time, that that was one of the things that he would enjoy doing and recommended to me, that that would be a good thing to do, uh, always to understand.
As a group, or?
No, not as a group, but individually. I think you can go with one other member if you wanted to, like if.
You know, with one or two other people.
Uh, one, I would say, because then if you start getting to three, that's three out of five. It's not quite a quorum, but, yeah, I'd, I would say two max would be appropriate, would be, yeah.
But that would be okay?
That would be okay.
I'd pick her.
Okay.
She's always full of questions and.
Okay. Under other items, um, I noticed each, all members, uh, received a memo, a bulletin regarding the open house on the zoning regulations update. Um, do you want to talk to it, Dan?
Yeah, so the open house will be September eleventh at the Baldwin Center, uh, from four to seven. You can come anytime. It's not like a presentation that begins at four. Uh, I believe there will be different booth setup, setups. Um, we'll have members from, uh, the consultant group that we have helping us with the rewrite there, to answer any questions about the process. Uh, the staff will all be there. Um, and if you have a few minutes, you know, we'd love to see you.
Yeah, we had, I had, before joining this board, I was, um, an alternate on the zoning commission, and we started this discussion. So I know they've been working to get it organized, get it cleaned up. Um, I know, um, my colleague, the chairman of the planning commission, Ms. Graham, said that, you know, they were looking through, and there's things like references to, was it feather pluckers or chicken pluckers or some, yeah, there's some, some things that are a little on the outdated side that are in there. But, you know, I, I think it's very, it's a very important thing to do to get ours cleaned up. They've been amended various times. There's not really a rhyme or reason in some cases when you read through it. Um, so if we're going to be a business-friendly town and friendly to our residents, it's, it helps to get it organized, cleaned up. I don't think they're, well, we'll learn if we, if you attend it, uh, what type of revisions are, but I think the big effort that they're trying to do is make sure it's accessible, readable, understandable, well-organized, um, and a little less cryptic, maybe a little bit more modern than what we have right now. So I think it's a good effort, and I would encourage everybody to at least spend a little bit of time down there. And you're, as land use commissioners, your input is always important, so feel free to provide it either in person or in writing, as your schedule allows.
Speaking, um, about the, the last one, gosh, there was just a wealth of all kinds of information.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And possible things that could be applied to zoning.
Absolutely.
I really enjoyed it.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Carroll?
So, Mr. Chairman, or perhaps Mr. Brennan, if you could just, uh, how the rules go into effect, is it, is there a committee that would accept these rules, or is it something that goes?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, the final say is through the zoning commission. So there will be several meetings, um, some administrative, all open to the public, where anything, any change that, to legalize it, needs to be voted on and approved. Um, I believe the planning commission gets a vote on it too, for their recommendations for final changes.